I'd like to call the regular Columbia Board of Selectmen meeting to order Tuesday, October 1st, year 2024. And at this time, while we have Zoom hybrid public, it will be in person or electronically. We have some guests electronically. And I ask that everybody be respectful. And if you are called upon, or you have a comment and deemed a subject matter expert, we call this is not an open forum. But I do understand. So next order of business, please join me in a further meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I mean, I can say it's a matter. Into the Republic, oceans and. A rule of the agenda, our favorite, I move to approve the agenda with. I need to ask for one addition, 5.1 old business discussions on the boathouse garage door. And how the cost has gone up. And we need to look for a pool of $5,120.75, which we have in our performs, but all. So discuss them, all those in favor. Again, they follow us. Proven minutes. I'm moved to approve the board's second and regular meeting minute for September 17th, 2024. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I understand. Thank you. Audience of citizens. Anybody that's got an agenda? Thank you. Old business, 5.1 boathouse garage door. Well, surprise, boathouse, new topic. When the bid spec was put together before we sent out, our facilities engineer called around to a couple of different places and said, much as a garage door in the general area. He got back a little bit because they were thinking he was talking about a house garage door. Not a garage door that we needed on the rainbow house. So Peter Dunick, our new facilities engineer went out and got two bids. He's been here, went from Norwich and came in at. Let's say 5120, 75 cents. We need to put a door on it.
And then a rolling door. And it needs to have a frame built. Once the two garage door companies with this, this is not a standard garage door. We need what works. Designed. They're so.
We still have $40,000 in our money. We could use toward this if we want to use it. Now remember, our company needs to be spent by the end of this year.
It has to be contracted by December 31st, all locked in, then you kick it in. If you don't use it, you lose it.
Do we put money aside for it? Should this be a?
There is $1,200 in capital, so capital, it'll stay in capital.
So you would take off the 1,200 bucks then?
We could use the last part or just roll capital to another project. But that that would be a separate discussion. I just want to have at least authorized enough to do the garage door, so we can actually do a PR. You could do $3,844.35. Because I do have.
But then we now make sure we spend that for December 30th either way.
And this could be spent.
Right.
Houses open, it's just a manual opener?
Yeah, still maybe. We're not doing a motor.
And the way they designed it, it's going to be able to open it with the ring.
Be locked.
Yeah. Locked.
Yeah.
But somewhat deterred of scavengers.
But you're not going to steal them.
Not through the ground, not going to throw it up over the land, no.
Right.
But it'd be hard to pull them away.
Exactly.
So I move to accept a bid of $5,120.75 for the boathouse garage door. And to use our performs to pay for it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New business. New business, discussion on social services.
And so I wanted to talk to the board about getting a meeting, a board committee of mental health professionals to assess what the needs are in Columbia for a number of hours. There's a number of hours and what the needs are so that we can know who to hire. What, you know. If what need to hire. I get this point in just doing this assessment. Now, I did talk to people at the fire department. And they said, there's 40 to 50 people, families in town that need help. And some of the issues, now they're not, they know issues, they don't know diagnosis. But the poverty, complete disarray to extremes, unsafe conditions, lack of medical equipment, and no idea how to get it, lack of in-home care, and no way they're how to get it, lack of food, and no knowledge of meals on wheels. You know, medical boards or the complete isolation and mental stress, people send home from the hospital, no idea how to get help. Some people just need someone to check up. So I guess I'm just looking for any committee just to do an assessment. Yes, if we need somebody, and if we do, what credentials should that person have?
So I see two members of our fire department here, and I'm I'm a little concerned that that list is what she reads out. What are we failing?
So Scott, I have a party. We were asked to be here by Mark tonight. And I just, the first thing I want to say is myself as the chief, Jeff Lewis sitting here as the president and my deputy chief. If anything is coming out of the firehouse, it should be from us. I'm not sure who exactly you talked to, doesn't matter. I'm sure there are people in town that that need assistance. We go to, you know, houses occasionally that people need assistance. I'm not sure it's as widespread as that list that you have there from somebody, I guess, at the fire department. Sure, who I could surmise, I guess, possibly.
We don't need that.
Who we're talking to. But it doesn't matter. But we are the spokesman for the firehouse. So as the chief and as the president and deputy chief, under the two people that this information should be coming from. Yes, we go to places, we go into people's houses that people need assistance. And when we have that, we contact Bernadette, or it was Katie before, but now you have Brittany. So all we need is to get Bernadette and Brittany and, you know, Mark to the table so we can all sit down and meet. We have contacts of who to contact when certain things come up. It's up to you guys if you want to have somebody come in and assess. But I don't see a huge wide, you know, spread problem in town. There are people, of course, that need help. And then there's people that need help that probably aren't going to ask for it or want it anyway. So as all animals, Jeff has anything else to add? Go ahead.
Sure. Curious discussions would be, and I think the concern is on a lot of levels as far as whether everybody's being represented. AHM deals, this whole deals with the younger people. The senior center deals with the older people, but in between you have issues as far as, you know, rehab after after drug issues, something like that. All I'm really asking, or what we're really asking for is to form a committee. We've been doing this with HVAC, we did it with the infrastructure of the streets. It's not, we're not committing to anything. We just want to get a look at it. There's people in town that I really like the temporary committees that we've been using because you can talk to people in town who have expertise and say, look. You know, it doesn't have to be just mental health professionals, but just people from town, the fire department groups. Let's all sit down and talk about the situation and see what we need, what the needs are. No commitment. We'll, like, they'll come back to us with recommendations. We'll go from there with that. But that's how I view it. And I'd ask you to support the formation of such a committee.
Jeff Lewis, deputy chief, president of the fire department. So during COVID, myself under former past chief, Stemsky, we started uncovering things. And we didn't know where to turn. We've asked multiple times, can we just have a meeting? Bring everyone to the table, let's have a meeting. And what we see, Steve had it, and myself, we have contacts now, we have phone lists. I was talking to Jen when I came in the other day. Let's just make up a little flyer that we can give these people. Most people are not going to come to you, and they're not going to be honest with you with what they need. I've been working out of the firehouse now for almost five years. One of the top responders, I'm seeing all of them during the day and at night. I go into these residents, these people are not going to talk to you. It's up to, we're going to be the ones that are going to come back. And it was me the one going to Katie Will, saying, this is what we got, this is what we got. What I want, now that we have Brittany onboard, can we meet, can we have a meeting? Can we just come together at the table before we go get a committee? You can bring in the experts, but if people aren't talking, you're not going to know what the need is. You're never going to know what the need is until you can get them to talk and come to the table. And people now are so withdrawn, they're not coming out. It was, it was person that got to Mark, just to get meals on wheels for him. So that's all, just a meeting. Let's just start with a meeting first.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Here's what I want to say. This is the not us in them type of situation. It's all for the citizens of our town. Can I see your wrist? Bernadette, I'm okay with the committee because if we're missing somebody, that's one too many, okay? Bernadette, I'm just kind of, kind of, now, we brought Brittany on to hopefully deal with some of these issues. She's not trained in social services, do counseling or, but I'm going to read off this thing. This list that you had, or maybe I'll have you read it. I can't read that. Tell me, and I know, I know there's a few on there that we don't handle. But I want to make sure as of right now, we have a planned place to be better at some of these things. But it's not, we don't handle everything for some of the needs of the minority of the people. Hopefully, it's minority. So I'm fine with the committee to discover how, if we're missing somebody, how we can do better. But Brit- Brittany and Bernadette, we brought Brittany on to be able to handle some of this stuff. And I want to make, I want to go through the list and just yes or no if it's something we're moving toward or we're going to do better.
Well, first it's boarding.
Boarding. So.
We are currently working on that right now. We actually currently have a situation right now. We are have a game plan and working through with the appropriate resources.
boarding was a meeting of the fire marshal, the building official, Bernadette.
Okay, but. Things are different. Or just have those things that nobody raises their hand and says, I'm a horn. Right. So that, okay.
Complete disarray to extremes and unsafe conditions in the home.
That's usually, again, again, yes, it's hard to, we need to find those people, but it's very difficult.
Equipment and no idea how to get it.
Hold on. Can we help people with needs of medical equipment and how to get it?
Yes, if it is, so right now, we work with the Lebanon Senior Center. They have a full equipment rental program as well as we refer to medical pharmacy. But there is a means and a ways they're able to call us for that as well. Unfortunately, we don't have one here in Columbia. And last time I asked, which was many, many years ago to the town attorney, was that because of liability, we didn't want to have to collect it and store it and then have someone rent it from us or something like that and have an issue.
Okay.
So that's why we.
Lack of in-home care and how to get it. Can we help people with that?
Yes, we do every day. There's many.
Well, lack of food and no knowledge of how to get, we have that. I mean, have.
Okay.
The transportation, that you can get free medical alerts. And people have complete isolation and mental stress. People send, I guess there's some concerns, people sent home in the hospital, that could be a psychiatric hospital or drug.
Yeah, it could be anything.
Could be anything.
Listen, my wife, my wife is in recovery room at a hospital. And they're supposed to be taken home by a family member or a friend. And, you know, they don't, they don't they don't just put them in an Uber and send them off. So somebody has to bring them home. And I mean, if we can get contacted those people, sometimes it's a HIPAA thing. And they don't want to share that. We don't know about it. It's tough to check on them. But maybe we could be a little bit more aggressive or do better or try and find out from people.
I guess I'm thinking somebody, even let's say somebody has an alcohol problem, could know who goes to AAH, you could hook them up with somebody. I mean, it's all that kind of stuff. To be professional students and stuff, I used to do that. People need somebody to check on. You know, that's, I know they're doing some of that.
Okay. So.
I do have a list.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I do have a list of the local AA meetings and NA meetings that I do give out, so I keep that up to date in the senior center as well for family and for those who need to go themselves. So that is something we also do here in Columbia.
I kind of agree with Bill. I'm okay with having a committee. I tell people these days, I hate surprises. I really, I hate surprising. Somebody calls me and said, you know, my mother, they're in California or something, my mother hasn't seen anybody in a week, or somebody says, I haven't seen my neighbor in three weeks and stuff like that. Things will fall through the cracks, but if there are better ways of doing things. I'm okay with the committee saying, hey, I've seen this done here. Or there's a program over here that we can help it, or we can steal because it's working. It's a great thing. Other people are doing things that are helping their community, steal their idea, they'll give it to you. If they're, if they're true to their calling, which is to help people, okay? So I don't have a problem with the committee. I think what we will find that we can handle most stuff. We just need to know about it. We just need to know about it.
No professional going in that they teach, you know, they know how to get people to to talk, to kind of show, tell what's going on. I mean, I did that on my, my own work.
What I'm talking about is to get that in, to know who's in the town, you need people to talk to tell you where it is.
Right.
So that's what I meant by get people to talk, is trying to find out where it is. And what I was saying is the meeting is just so we can all meet each other. So you know who me and Scott are as the faces of the fire department, and I know who Brittany and Bernadette are, I know who the selectmen are. We're all on the same page, working together for that common goal, the fire marshal who's now is involved and conditions that have to be. We learned that a few years ago in the house. So it's just coming together and maybe it's quarterly, have a quick meeting, everyone together. So we're all on the same page because this is a problem. And we all want to attack it the same way. That's why we're talking about it.
Right.
Our biggest problem is going to be that button. Yeah, we get, we get called in the 911 call to somebody south there, to be real careful, who we're referring and why. And not violating their rights. Especially the AAH, great idea. Go to some people's house.
They have to want.
Yeah, we try to be careful on who we refer to, you know.
They have to agree, Bernadette, they have to agree.
For alcohol, of course, but even in other conditions, you know, the formal conditions.
Yes.
That. Because we have to be careful if you're called for murder scene.
So
I move that we form a temporary committee to assess the social services needs in town of Columbia.
Okay. Great. Hold on, discussion. I'd like to say something. Please keep me abreast on findings. We don't need to know names. I need to, you know, I want to know again, if we're falling short. Okay? That's my comment. Yes?
I understand your passion. Where you are. Do we hire a nutritionist? Do we hire a physical therapist? Do we hire a doctor? Do we hire all these other professions that people need that they might not be able to get? So I like the idea of being able to come together and help people, but they also need all these other things to be directed to too. And committee, yes, but to hire a I love what Bernadette and Brittany are doing. They're kind of like this source where we can point people in the right direction. And to actually hire a professional as a town. I'm not sure I can do that, but I can, I can support a committee to look at, make sure that we are figuring out the best way to get people the help in all sorts of things, not just mental health, but all, all sorts of things, food and everything, all that stuff.
My favorite. Hold your vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Great, thank you.
We're going to see that thing. That'd be something.
Absolutely.
Yes, if you want to be.
Chief, I got to say. You're the head over there. You can, okay. If something happens in my town and I don't hear about it, I deserve to have on my table and, you know, it's my fault. We train our people, we believe in our directors to get the jobs done, and I hate surprises, and I still get them. And I believe me, I hope people, listen, that's on me now. You're, you're, you know, you represent the town. And I'm there in spirit, and that's you, chief. Okay? Have a meeting in your house and help yourself. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Democrat town, committee rally on the green. I don't know.
I don't know if there's a need to give permission to, I don't think it is, but I guess we figured we'd rather ask for permission and.
Well, is it a peaceful assembly? I don't know. Do you have a license to sample? Do they need a permit?
No, as long as signs are not left, more than the final of these. That's fine.
Then we'll take them down. They won't be a, then we have the scare bros over here too.
I think those are your people already.
Doing their job.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Maybe once a day.
It's a Sunday, Wednesday.
I think November 6th is available. Okay, this, this next one, it's quite a time because I got a meeting with some people today. Creating a committee and a theme for commemorating the United States 250th anniversary. As you know, two years ago, three years ago, I said to Lions Club. We need to start working now toward our parade for our 250th. Last year, we used more money. We've added money pretty much every last few years. We had more money last year in a tent for to see if it was worth bringing in a couple of big bands. I thought the parade was better than previous years. But I had a meeting today with Jill Dor and our town historian, Ingrid. Some ideas. And I really, I'd like to now have a committee to go over and have people spitball or brainstorm, or, I mean, I'd like to see a float for 10 different periods in our 250-year history that made a true difference in our country. You know, whether it's the first meeting of a continental congress, and next is, you know, the Gettysburg Address on a different float, and the next is, you know, Henry Ford, you know, building a Model T, have some people on a float. You know, and I'd like to have every float to be able to have a microphone and a speaker and a three-minute skit that they can perform every 500 yards. So people go, wow, it's a, it's a period in our country. I mean, the landing on the moon. Have the recording of that. I mean.
It's amazing.
I'm really passionate about it, but the bottom line is, we're only going to turn 250 once. And as young as we are, we've done some remarkable things, you know, turned twice.
You, I'm old enough to remember the bicentennial committee in Columbia.
I believe we, oh.
Yeah. You know, pick it back as well. We should do the same thing here.
Start society, we were trying to get somebody, see if we could find somebody to be in charge of that person. It's a committee, but maybe is what, you know, so yeah, we need a committee, we can't go on.
So because if the town fails on this, people are going to go towards, we're in the board of selectmen, and I don't want it to be just on us. But, I mean, I really think we can do very well by the time. And it's not just a one-day event. I'd like the summer series to have you know, patriotic songs and stuff, leading up to the Fourth of July, or have a town-wide picnic. We can, we can do a lot of things. So if we start now, and the state has put out some things that they're doing and guidelines and stuff, but you know, we usually have a pretty good turnout on the Fourth of July, and we can set the tone.
Yeah.
So, so I make a motion to, I mean, everybody in full, for setting up a committee for the Fourth of July and the 250th anniversary. Everybody.
I'll check to see if that person is still interested.
I would be on that.
If they're not, it's going to be me, and I'm, I'm the son of a gun to work.
Oh, I know.
Does, does any one of you four play the piccolo or, or drum? So your costumes are being made right now. You will be revolutionary. So.
Actually, no.
Board of education, 2324 year entrance.
And they give the money back. $238,892. And it's required by law, and the full accounting on the last page, there's the this. It's in detail, but the last page is the whole summary of all areas that went from back to back. Lot of two, we've had one, one superintendent doing two jobs for a while on the both the spec led and superintendent, and we all had hard-time assistance, so there were savings there. And in the five-pack minutes that we're typing up, and I have the full accounting of the savings in more detail by February that I could get you.
But I want to caution, when you look at this. They I don't believe in all good conduct, they over budgeted.
No, because they've agreed. There was grants as well.
So how did we know they would spend less on heating oil? How did they, how did we know they'd save $20,000 on electricity? But it's because of the decision we made with solar, Rand, the way they run the school. So there's a lot of things here that is very difficult to.
Well, I know I get credit for a bus that we never had all year, minus one bus, so the bus company gave us a big credit, but it all added up.
And they gave them that.
Yeah, they decided not to put it into their.
Did they do the oil tank?
They, they're self-funding out of their own money, their $250,000 oil tank that we have to dig up out of, and replace.
250?
I believe it's 150. It's not cheap.
I know, they said it was going to be at least $100,000. Well, I know, they said it was gonna be at least a hundred thousand dollars. So, but it's already been paid for in last year's funding? They have it paid for. Yes. Uh, there's a problem we have to leave, so we can give it quite a lot to do. Any questions on this stuff? Go through if you really want to look at where they. But uh. All right, Memorial Beach, uh, excuse me, Memorial Bench location approval from the. Approval on the Columbia Town Hall, I move to approve the proposed location for the Zenga family memorial bench. So, does everybody have this in there? Uh, you'll know that. To the right of the tree, you can see a bench there. That Cindy's memorial bench, use the working land use. I. I do come to the town hall often. And I see people sitting on the benches around Memorial in reflection. So uh I love the fact that the Zenga family wants to do something there and I think that's a great spot. You know, twelve feet to the left of the bench we have for Cindy.
Go ahead, just pointing out, um, that looks around the area where when we have voted, we put the seventy five foot sign there, so during voting. Right now, it's extended voting, there may be a sign. Encouraging people to.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll look like you then.
Good point.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Nothing for the late? Uh, I move to approve the resignation of Larry Crefton for planning and zoning. He's been out a while, he wrote us a letter, it's time to move on with it. Any discussion? All those in favor? I move to approve the appointment. Of Paul Owen and Dylan Ozacki as assistant animal animal control officers. Really a formality and discussion. Well, I know that Dylan is the son of uh Mike Ozacki, which is the animal control officer. I'm sure that he's been trained. Um, I don't, we all. I don't know Paul. Has he been hired by the town? He's been hired by the town. So we're in the in the partnership with them. Yeah, I know that, but. If we contract with Mike.
I can get it.
Now, listen to I I this this is. If we contract with East half animal control. Who are we to say who they hire if they provide services here?
I agree. But they have to be. Appointed. I think what we're doing is officially appointing them. They represent East half. Every town in this regional agreement has to appoint their animal control officer. So that's the formality we're doing. We're not actually hiring. We're appointed.
All those in favor? Just weird. Resignation, um. I move to approve the resignation of Anika Fegan, Assistant Recore. I I was surprised and sorry to hear you go too. Got a great opportunity. Got a full time job with the naval base in ground. Yes. So it was hard for her to. Be able to make it a point of. Make it out. But it'll be a big one.
I always like talking to them.
Oh, good, no, any correspondence staff. Um, I put a notice that's gonna go out about early voting. And the lady Susan from Ripple. You can read all about. Um, the drawdown. And. What not to break out of the, don't rake the pond weed out of the lake because of the spur of the team, you'll make more problems. The time to rake is to be spring, not the fall. That wasn't your administrative.
So. A staff at a flyer, explain our new regulations for accessory dwelling units, the planning zoning pass. So this is, well, you can, you can change the houses. Um, but. The links will be there and the information of what are the community types, the accessory dwell, detached, interior and attached. You can see the little cartoon drawings of what's possible and a lot of this. Possibilities to vacate. Partying to your in-laws exist. And it doesn't happen with that. But it has to be under diagnostic. So those different types of things.
I mean, the only thing that gets me, in Columbia, maybe built on any lot. In a district that allows a one family dwelling, but it has to meet setbacks, health department. Setbacks of dwell and septic and so that's not gonna happen in small.
Does this come to meet the nutrient allocation mode? Events in the.
I think the lake area was disqualified. Disorders. The lake area not in.
I don't know, I never saw the final one, but I know that statute said that they have to be allowed in any. Own in which some family residents can be well.
But in. In the lake zone. I can, I can name you three or four that are already dead. One was built this year.
Well, it has to meet nutrient allocation. And they probably, and they would have had to have a permit, no? Did they not pull a permit? Okay, so they probably went through, before this was even done, they probably met all the specs that were needed prior to this change. And I would imagine that. Like nutrient allocate, you know, it would run off and everything else. They're not gonna waive that for an additional dwelling on somebody's property. But we'll look into it.
Um, the next thing, I just wanted to report on the Hock River Bridge. This is a status for now of of the. Uh, means we have. Town of Coventry is the lead town on this project, but right now. The. Estimate completion date is November seventeenth. Uh, so it's it's coming fast and right now they're they're ahead of schedule. They want to get this done, put this on. Coming in good. There's some information here that's interesting when you read more about the utilities. Um, and they're very concerned that. The utilities are saying that they are going to be unable to meet the schedule of the work for due to internal funding issues. So, uh, that's that's going to rear its head. That's not gonna be acceptable reason for why they. They're not gonna delay this bridge opening due to their lack of funding for reshoring the lines.
So they're just gonna allow.
I don't, I I I I wanna, I wanna know about all that and I wasn't that that mean. Probably mean with that.
So electricity is just about it, so if they don't string lines, they may not.
It's not ever sourced, it's um, it's charter, inspecting and front here. So their lines. And then uh I just wanted to tell everybody, case interested, there's a Northeast Connecticut tourism park Wednesday, October twenty third. In Brooklyn, Connecticut. So that's our tourism district. See all the people that are gonna be there, all the senators and state acts and. Mayors and first left, but mostly out in the northeast.
That list may change.
It could change, I plan to notify. I sit on these conference calls, they don't really apply from, you know, on the giant tourist drop. But we do have a line and. And a uh. And main moose. And Dr. Trust for hiking.
And like and all the rail trails.
Well, that's the main attraction area, it's intersection of Hock River and the airline trail.
They would only fix the rest of the.
I don't, I can't believe we cannot get that out.
No, you you said that incorrectly. I keep, it's already funded. It was funded six years ago. I cannot believe that they're collecting to finish that, but even though it's funded.
That's all I have to do.
Right. No transfer, no refund. I moved to approve the payment of bills totaling a hundred and twenty two thousand seventy two dollars.
Oh, that's from.
Hundred and twenty two, hundred and twenty two and seventy two dollars and fifty three cents. Uh, twenty four, twenty five emergencies, my forty five regular credit card.
So.
What do they have that wanted to spin some?
They may have replaced it when you come off of Latham Hill to take a left. Around the corner there near the rock. I may have seen them one in there. Yeah, but if somebody hit it.
If it did, we would have, you wanna know who did it, since it was there, then we could try to hit them, insurance company for the question.
Why is it on here twice? So this reimbursement to the plants and everything, that's the that's the money that wasn't gonna cost us anything? Uh, Nancy Miller, reimbursement for events supply, for plants, senior son. What did we pay to the keeper?
That's um for a dog that we rescued and animal control started GoFundMe. Where we have the funds, we have to transfer the GoFundMe funds back to, but we had paid with that dog.
And we'll give that money reimbursed. And GoFundMe?
Was freshly rescued, people are very generous to save the dog instead of euthanizing. There's a two that.
No.
You did it again, I did.
All those in favor, fans of those. Why are you interested?
All citizens.
Thank you for your comment, what else?
And then, if you don't have the interview. Um, and then can anyone use the senior center? So I I heard that a friend had said that there were some resources posted at the senior center. So is that open to the public throughout the day? And then just a suggestion, um, I love that idea of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, I'm wondering if maybe this. I am not speaking for them, I'm just saying, maybe schools can get involved in it too and maybe have some art teachers do some. Art with the kids or maybe incorporate studies curriculum, um, or do like the Columbia history at the school. Um, this may be getting the school involved in whatever projects you guys think of and getting the kids to be able to market it in a history.
Thank you. Anybody? Remember comments? I'm gonna make a comment, although Bernadette said the the food pantry is open for any family in Columbia, okay? And I think they do a nice job over there. I do think they have some growing to do, but I do believe that they'll get the job done. But I said it once, twice, I'm gonna say one more time, if somebody's left behind in Columbia, shame on us. However. When the committee's here and they make their recommendations, it has to be something that we can um. Take seriously. And and see how we can provide it or get the manager to provide it for them if it's available. Um, the two fifty thing. You know, if I ever thought I was gonna be a history teacher, I would have kids pull. A a time period out of a hat. And each child would write a short story about, and then we would pull a person out of the hat. And we would write it, every every child would write a a short story. About that time period and in the end, it would be a book. About this person living in, going through the time of the United States. And maybe even send it to a. But I'm not a history teacher, but if you know one, you wanna tell them to use that. Um, and those are my comments. Thank you all for all you do. So at this time, I'd like to suspend the board of selectmen meeting. And enter into executive session. I would ask that. And Mark Wall. This time we're shutting off the recording, direct, thank you, Christine.
You're shutting it off and that.
Is the author still in there? Is the author still in the. This time we're exec uh exit from executive session, eight thirty and resume our board of selectmen meeting. Uh, with no motion and no action. And it's eight thirty one, uh, make a motion that we adjourn, all those in favor.